Bradford.
Here.
Penny Casimir.
Here.
Gavin Newman.
Here.
Joe Ruffalo. Mike Shackleton.
Here.
Angela Wilcox.
Here.
Joe's unable to join us tonight, he is traveling. If you'll rise and join us in the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for coming out tonight to our summer board meeting, our July meeting is probably the only one that feels like a summer. By the time we meet in August, all of a sudden, everybody's getting ready to start school and there's all that frenetic activity beginning. Now, for this evening, let's see, next up on our agenda is my report. I just have two quick reminders for the board. The first is, we have our board retreat for Monday, the 30th, right? At 7:30 over at our new admin building, right across the street.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Oh, I would've gone to the wrong place.
Ah!
That's so nice.
There's still time, we could've caught you.
It will be fun. And then, so that's 7:30, and then, on August 3rd is the luncheon for the new teachers as part of their kind of, their new teacher week, right? So it's August 3rd, and that is going to be where?
Right here.
Right here.
Right out here in the comments.
Do you have time for that?
11:30, we're just looking at that today, 11:30, right?
You asked for 11? Nope, I apologize, 11:30.
It's 11:30, I believe.
11:30, it's 11:30, and it's a Friday, right?
Yes, it is.
A Friday, August 3rd.
Got it.
Yeah, it's 11:30.
And you'll send us out a reminder?
I will.
Okay, I'm putting it on right now.
Great lunch.
The, it's always actually fun, I mean, the last few years in particular, the group of new teachers has been a pretty eclectic group with a lot of different experiences, so particularly a lot of the second career folks, so it's fun to meet them. Okay, that concludes my report. We'll go into public comment. Is there anybody who wants to talk to the board this evening? No, we're a friendly group, it's summer, Cubs are in first place, Cardinals aren't, we're on a good mood.
Five games this weekend.
Five games?
I'm just saying, the Reds beat them both, but anyway.
Reds are hard! Okay.
True.
Go White Sox.
Seeing that, we will declare public comment closed, and we'll move into our superintendent report.
All right, bear with me a minute, I'm gonna switch out here. I do have a few items, even though we're in the middle of summer. Just get situated here. I think it will show up. What do you know? All right. I would like to start this evening and just update the board on enrollment, and you do have the ever-familiar chart here in front of you that shows our elementary enrollment across the district at all of our schools. We are currently in pretty good shape. If you look across here, lots of blue, lots of black, which means that obviously we're either at or below, you know, our guidelines. We do have a couple of hotspots I want to point out. First, if you look at North Barrington, third grade, I was talking to Mr. Johnson earlier today and yesterday about that situation, third grade. He does have, you know, a space available, he is getting somewhat tight there in the building, but he does, he will certainly make it work. I do believe that is an issue that we need to address.
When you say he has space, meaning he has extra space?
Well...
If we were to add a section, is that what you're saying?
He will, he will have a third grade classroom, yes. He's gonna have to reorganize and rearrange some things, but definitely willing to make the change, let's put it that way. So, I mean, nothing's sitting vacant right now, but, he will, he will make it work within the building. So that is something, you know, in context of this, that, you know, I do believe we should address. Also, if you look at Huff, we continue to have, you know, those challenges at the primary level there, but again, in talking with Mr. Offs on that, he'd like to certainly continue to have classroom support, and again, if you know at Huff, there is no additional space there, so, you know, for now, they're, they're comfortable with that, you know, continuing to move forward. We do have aid support already assigned to those spots as we did last year. The other scenario that doesn't really show up as a number on here, but I want to explain to you what's going on, it's always kindergarten. Kindergarten's always our wild card. If you look at Roslin, you will see in kindergarten, there's 23, if you add those two together, that's the extended day and the full day together, those two numbers. So you'll, during the full day scenario, you will have 23, 23, and 22, which is at the top end of that environment, at least for a majority, or half the day at least. Already, North Barrington had been capped, and we had been sending kids to Roslin because we already had the extra section there. So 10 of those students are North Barrington students in those numbers. Or 11, I'm sorry, 11. And what we would, we believe we need to do is to add a section at North Barrington, move those kids back, and I think that will make both buildings happy. So we're looking at, and that'll balance out in a good way at both of those sites. So that is another opportunity that I believe we're gonna make a change here in the next couple days.
So two sections at North Barrington?
Yes.
And the half is basically?
No, three.
Three.
Third section, correct?
You're gonna have a third section.
It would be a third kindergarten section at North Barrington, and we'd be adding two teachers at North Barrington, that is correct, kindergarten and third grade.
And maintaining, and maintaining three sections of kindergarten at Roslin at the same time.
Three, three at...
Three.
Three at Roslin. We're, we're, yeah, it's been trickling up both of them. It's been, they've been walking in over the last few weeks, so it's been interesting, so...
You're not moving one from Roslin, then?
No. No, we would keep it there because we...
Just moving those 11 students back.
That is correct.
And where are we on our staffing with the contingency we have?
Great question. Right now, we have two, and if, so if I use these...
Two available?
That's right, so if I use these two, we'll be with nothing that's currently in the budget. You know, I, that is part of the conversation here as well, and we can certainly wait and talk along that with our tenet of budget conversation later tonight, too, that's fine. But I would feel more comfortable if I did have a little latitude over the next month to be able to deal with enrollment spikes in any particular area where we see fit. Only would use it as if needed. But that, that's the case at the elementary level. Middle school and high school, again, I believe that we're in great shape at both of those levels and comfortably staffed, so I don't anticipate any, you know, additional staffing requests at those budgets. Questions on enrollment?
Yeah, I have, I have two questions. One is, at Countryside, mine has like red writing at the top of it, and I just, I didn't understand what that was.
That, that is a, it's black, okay?
That is a formula issue. It turned in red, so it was my attempt to make it black.
Oh, it was black, okay, I was like, this doesn't look like it's over, but I don't understand.
It's black, it's not.
Okay.
Ben and I could not get that formula to change for whatever reason.
Okay, well, no big deal.
It'll be fixed by the next time you see it. It's black.
And then, my other question was, is, are any of these, like horizontal highlighting in yellow, or like the light yellowish green, does that indicate anything, or does that mean anything?
The green is total number of students.
No, when it was like, this, this stuff, what does that mean?
Yes, horizontal on Rose. Yeah, yeah. It's my way of knowing where we added a section over last year, green, meaning we increased by one section in that particular grade, yellow meaning we decreased.
If I go to Countryside, then, where's this Countryside 4, which is highlighting green?
There were two sections last year.
Last year, there were two in 4, right? Okay.
Yellow means we went down one, and pink, pink and anomaly in Rose at fifth grade, we went up two, and that's why it's pink.
Oh, okay.
It's a really, you know, high-level coding system.
I like this.
That's my elementary background.
This document changes about every other day.
I'll get purple next time for these people.
It's just for us to keep track of how we're managing FTE and what's happening in enrollment across the district.
Well, yeah, and if people are like, oh, last year, my kids were used to three sections, now there's two.
Mm-hmm.
Got it. Thanks, you guys, looks great.
Any other questions for Brian?
Okay, that's item number one.
Item number one, move on to item number two.
Item number two, I am very excited to introduce a recommendation on the personnel report tonight for our new principal at Rose Elementary. Great to see a lot of staff and parents here tonight in support. Since we last met at the board, we went through a pretty significant interview, very quick, very efficient interview process and application process, and we are happy to recommend tonight for the board Heather Schumacher. Let me tell you a little bit about her. You might be familiar with her. Well, first of all, her credentials as far as the academic preparation, and also, her experience, most recently, she spent the last four years in leadership roles in Highland Park, and as an assistant principal and a principal of Elm Place School. She also did summer school responsibilities in a couple locations, including Barrington 220. She's returning to 220 as a former teacher here and spent many years here in our classrooms, and certainly excited to have her return in this role. So, let's make sure there wasn't one more slide I couldn't remember. So again, excited about the opportunity here, and thank you again for the staff and parents that are here this evening to welcome her to the role.
In a few minutes, we'll go through, and we'll make the formal approval, and we'll give anybody a chance if they would like to make a comment at that point.
Real quickly, legislative-wise, I think the board is very aware of some of the, it's not all legislative here, it's kind of what's been going on in DC and in Springfield. Springfield's been somewhat quiet, the budget passed, you all know that, we're in pretty good shape there, better than we have been in past years.
Have we received the state money for the ELC?
We have not, not as of today. It's been voucherd.
It's been voucherd, but we haven't received it yet.
I took it in mid-June, and when it gets to my presentation, I'll have a couple of comments on how we're examining that, and how we would record that, so...
My focus over the past week and a half, though, has been in DC. As the board knows, I was out there last week and advocating on behalf of public education, had a great opportunity to get updated on national and federal level items. I spent a majority of our conversations around the Perkins Grant, it is due to be reauthorized, our Perkins legislation, which is our career and technical ad funding. We use a majority of that funding currently in our partnership with Harper for programs here at the high school level. There are some additional funds that are used at the middle school and elementary level for career-oriented activities, but primarily, majority of the funds are at the high school level. Our, one of our local legislators, Representative Carissa Morthee, I call him Rajas when he goes by, he is the leader of this, this particular legislation and a bipartisan effort, I do believe it's gonna happen here in the next few weeks, and he's one of the names on the bill and certainly working hard to get it passed, so if he is your legislator, it'd be great to tell him, if you get the opportunity, to tell him thank you, and he was very receptive to that. I did have the opportunity to meet with Senator Duckworth and also with Representative Braskin when I was there, and, you know, had great conversations with them on public education, and gonna certainly stay in contact here over the next few weeks. I will say this, you're probably aware of the Supreme Court case as well, that was handed down in late June, since we last met, Janus, located right here in Illinois, dealing with the fair share and law and provision. Obviously, the day after that decision, you know, that provision is no longer in place, so I've been meeting with Dave and with Mary and our association leadership, and I've had conversations with both Steve and Mike, and they're very aware of how we're doing this moving forward. We don't have any outstanding issues, I think moving forward, we'll continue to work with our associations and handle that according to the law. The new court case certainly changed, practice has been in place since the late 70s, so it's gonna be a little different routine, but it's an operational change that's pretty significant. And, so we will be implementing that, you know, as we move along.
How do we handle that with our BSEO and BEA contracts? I know that there's, obviously, there are changes in legislation that will govern, but do we go ahead and formally amend the agreements, or?
We do not, there's provisions in there that basically says the federal and state law will supersede any collective bargaining agreement, so we have to follow the law.
So you don't need to just...
Do you need an MOU?
My understanding is no. Now, well, our legal counsel is all over this, I know we've, in fact, Thursday, I'm gonna be participating in a webinar on this topic, and trying to look, and I think Mary hears, yeah, we're signed up for it on, so we'll get more detail on it. If there's anything we need to do, we'll do it, but I do, my understanding is no, that, you know, that certainly law supersedes any, you know, collective bargaining agreement, so... But we do have to change some internal procedures, which will take place. Oh, finally, I do want to take just a minute and comment on a letter I received, I did share it with the board last week, and this was from State Board of Education, as regard to ESSA, the new Every Student Succeeds Act. Under this legislation, every state now has the authority for their new accountability system. In Illinois, they have chosen to implement an accountability system that, in my opinion, is much, is very similar to No Child Left Behind. There are some differences, however, you know, in general, it's kind of more of the same. So I received a letter last week that I believe I shared with the board that indicated to me that two of our schools are underperforming, that's their term, not my term, and we have not received any formal reason why. We anticipate we know what it is, we believe it's a subgroup of students at both of our middle schools that do not meet the criteria for accountability. Now, we have not received that yet. John and Craig and our middle school principals and myself, we already had a meeting, one meeting last week, we're gonna meet again a lot over the next few weeks to dig into the data and certainly begin to address this, but it is the new frontier in accountability, and we're gonna certainly work hard to meet the needs of our kids. I will say this, and I think, Brian, you were at that meeting when I was advocating against the, the, you know, subgroup numbers. Bottom line is, any group of students in any of the, of the areas, if it's 20 students or above, then they're considered a group unto themselves. At our middle school level, we qualify, because we have 1,200,000 and 1,000 students in those schools, 20 students is not very many, and if you have 20 students in any category, any, you know, identified category that don't meet those expectations, then it's, you know, that's what they indicate as underperforming, so, so we will, I will have more information...
Yeah, it's hard to react until we get some details on who's acting.
It is, but I certainly just want to make you aware of it, but both of our middle schools are in this scenario, so we're certainly gonna be working with the staff at those levels, as well as, you know, leadership at the district level to, you know, certainly make changes and adjustments to hopefully rectify the concerns.
And do you have any idea when the state's gonna come forward with details?
We believe it will be October officially, because here's why, they said that there is a growth component that has not been figured into this yet, so, and so they, and again, but this growth piece is a little bit of a mystery. We, we think, you know, Ben Descalcy's been working on that, trying to figure, we're, you know, trying to figure out, so that's still, we, it may not be official, but it might be, depends on whether the growth is...
And then, No Child Left Behind law, there was a notice to the parents of those schools. Is it, is it in the state, in the Illinois state laws are also a notice?
There will be some notification requirement, that is correct.
And is it, do they dictate the content, or do we craft ourselves?
Uh, we have latitude, they provide some sample, but it's also part of the school report card as well.
Okay. That growth component, could that change the classification, or no?
Yes, it could. It may not, but it could. We don't know, this, they've been...
How do you get so excited yet?
No. But I certainly just want the board to be aware of it, and if you have any questions, you know, we're navigating it internally, I can tell you, every district out there right now is trying to sort this out. We all got the dear colleague...
Everybody got the...
Yes, they did. And with not a lot of, you know, explanation, and it's, I will just say, it's extremely frustrating.
It is.
Without clarity, they didn't even tell us what the category was, we think we know what it is, but...
Our expectations out of the state board should be higher.
Well, agreed. I, I will say this on a side note, one of the things that, John's not here tonight, he's out on vacation this week, but we are working with him and Ben, and along with several of the principals, we are working proactively to create our own school profile that we are gonna do for every school in the district. The high school currently has one that they use with their transcripts when they send it out for college applications for students. We're gonna model the high, we're gonna take an elementary version, we're gonna create a middle school version of that document, and we're going to create our own accountability component and profile and be able to tell our own story and not just rely on ISB to do that. So, do believe a lot of districts are preparing to do the same thing, and we're gonna certainly, you know, certainly deal with issues and pursue them, when we know we have challenges, we'll deal with it. We're not perfect, nobody is. On the other hand, just because of some bureaucratic accountability piece, I'll just, I'm being nice here, I've lived through it, NCLB as a principal and for many years, and it's extremely frustrating to focus on 21 students at any particular school, and then that whole school's deemed underperforming, and it's very frustrating, so... Unless there's any questions, that's all I have for this evening, I just wanted to share that.
Any questions, Brian?
So we don't know what the master's draft is for that?
Not yet.
Stay tuned, more to come.
But it may be in the media, though, we don't know. Whether they're, share it publicly, because we're not sure what they're gonna share and what they're not gonna share, you know, we haven't been told, so...
All right, okay. Under information reports, the board has received, now that we've got a chance to review the spring semester discipline report, and I know we had some specific procedural conversations enclosed, is there any additional comments or questions people have? Committee reports. Any committees have any reports? Thought you could tell us the summer meeting.
We had, policy had to calm down.
Yeah.
You guys are just out of control.
We earned a break, you guys.
I know.
We earned a break.
There was like smoke coming out of the engine room, I mean...
We're bracing for our next bundle.
Yes.
It's in the queue.
Oh, no.
Springfield's been busy.
We're bracing as well.
Okay, let's go through this evening's consent agenda. This evening's consent agenda includes minutes from open and closed on April 17th and open and closed on May 7th, or May 15th. We also have a group of finance reports, the exception report, the July bill list, the activity accounts, the June payroll, the treasurer's report, and the report on revenues and expenditures. There is a revised personnel report based on our conversation enclosed, and I think it's the one attached, Mary, is that right?
I don't see it here, yeah, it's not attached.
It will be released appropriately...
Same one you looked at earlier.
Okay, so the change hasn't been made, but it will be.
But it will be when it's posted.
Before it's released.
Okay.
So do we need to amend it or not?
We need to amend the motion.
Well, yeah, no, we need to approve it.
With the change.
With the change, the title change. Oh, no, because we need to make the approval.
Could we pull it off the consent agenda so we can approve it separately with those changes?
We could, if you want, you wanna do that? We can do that.
Seems easy enough.
Okay, well, okay, so we, we'll pull the personnel report off of the consent agenda, but still, on the consent agenda is paper bid, as well as a declaration of the disposal of surplus property along with the list, and as I understand it right, we're declaring it, this, the property on that list to be surplus, and authorizing the administration to either sell or dispose of that list.
Correct.
And then we have our annual renewal of the custodian contract, which is, I think, what do we say, is it the second or third year? Is it a five-year contract? I can't remember now, second year, second year, reflecting roughly a CPI increase. Is there a motion to approve?
And there's minutes, I don't think you mentioned the minutes.
I thought I did, so, yes, there's minutes, open and closed on April 17th and open and closed on May 15th. Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
Some would.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Ryan Battle?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Penny Casimir?
Yes.
Gavin Newman?
Yes.
Mike Shackleton?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Motion passes. Heather, Heather's not official yet, it's coming, though. Okay, is there a motion to approve this evening's personnel report?
Some would.
For a second?
Second.
And then, so the only change, right, just so we're all clear, right, is, is we just wanna change that one, the one title?
To clarification.
Yeah, just to clarify the title, right? So, the assistant department chair, what's listed there, we'll just take those words out, correct?
Correct, it will say TOSA? VHS.
Any other changes or discussion? So with that change, with that amendment, let's see, who made the, who made the motion in second, was it?
Penny with Angela.
Okay, are you guys both okay with that change?
Yes.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Penny Casimir?
Yes.
Gavin Newman?
Yes.
Mike Shackleton?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Ryan Battle?
Yes. The personnel report passes, Heather's official. For people who were part of this process, anybody wanna make any comments? As we welcome Heather back home?
I will, sure, Mary might want to, Craig might want to. We're, we were just excited to have a quality of candidate as Heather, and I think I mentioned that in my report, and I just also want to thank the, the parents and the staff that were here to come in in the summertime, late June, rearrange schedules, I know that happened, and, that's right, and, you know, help us with the selection process, and, you know, it was very much appreciated. That's why we always feel like we get great candidates and, and a great selection because of the participation with all the stakeholders, it's very important. If you have any other comments, Craig, you worked with Heather?
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's nice to see you. You know, I had the pleasure of working with Heather as a teacher at Station Campus for a number of years, and when you see a teacher start to express interest in leadership, and then doing the summer school principalship for us in our district, and then moving on, it's always great to welcome those individuals back to our district, so just want to officially welcome Heather back.
And I would just comment that it's, it's just a wonderful showing of support to see everyone tonight. Throughout the process, everybody has just been extremely professional and invested, obviously for a very important reason. To have someone to come home to the district, to lead Rose, is just a really nice opportunity, and I'm really happy to have Heather.
You want to say any words? Absolutely. Shoot, wherever you want!
Get on the mic.
You're what, you're night tonight!
If there's fight, too. I just want to thank the school board for this opportunity, Dr. Harris, Mrs. Dudak, Dr. Winkleman, Mr. Battle, I taught Delaney.
I know, I know.
I'm so excited even just to get to see you again.
I asked Delaney, I asked Delaney during the process, she gave you two thumbs up.
All right, good, you have to have the student seal of approval. I, I think the best years of my life teaching were in Barrington, and I feel like I had excellent opportunities to work with Craig and other leaders, which shaped me as an administrator when I stepped out to start a new journey, and then when this opportunity presented itself, I couldn't be more excited to come back, and I feel like I'm coming home, and to have the opportunity now to work alongside them, and then to be with this amazing community, they've been so supportive, and I'm just so honored to be here and to work with them, and they've been so supportive already, so thank you.
Welcome back!
Did you have anybody to introduce?
Oh, I do! I almost forgot this part, it's been a long time, I hope my husband might with me.
So, welcome, you're joining a great, you know, learning community down at Rose, so...
And a special year, the anniversary, the 20th anniversary.
Yeah, go Rose!
Does it really say 20th anniversary?
I didn't realize that. That's very fun. All right, back to the agenda, we got work to do.
If they want to stay, they can stay. If they want to stay, they can stay.
Yeah, you're happy to stay, if you've got other things to do on a beautiful summer night, we totally understand.
Jason and Lance are back, let me go.
Should we sneak out a little?
You all have a perfect shirt on.
Keep bringing a rose sign.
Okay, let's go down to our action items. Is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the notice of dismissal for Marcia Willockson?
So moved.
Any discussion? Rule call vote?
Penny Casimir?
Yes.
Gavin Newman?
Yes.
Mike Shackleton?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Brian Battle?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the district and the BSEO as presented to the board?
So moved.
So this is a memorandum of understanding that talks about reclassifying four employees into a more appropriate code based on our contract definitions. The total annual cost is roughly $11,000 for recalculate, or for reclassifying these four positions. Any other comments, questions? Rule call vote?
Gavin Newman?
Yes.
Mike Shackleton?
Yep.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Brian Battle?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Penny Casimir?
Yes.
Gavin Newman?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. The one thing I will say is now that we've gotten full kind of commitment of dollars, right, and I know we talked about doing the maintenance, you know, of the field itself, right, through our capital projects fund, you know, let's, as we get to scoreboard in, right, it looks like these donations may exceed that amount of money, right, and we talked about some other projects, so we'll look forward to whatever those requests are maybe coming up through the facilities committee, and then eventually to us, to let us know what those might be.
We might even have two, I've been talking with Mike and Steve about some additional, just, I would say renovations, like painting, and doing some aesthetic stuff, we'll see, it depends on the scope of what's going on.
What run that through the facilities, right, because some of that should come out of our stuff.
We will, so, but we'll, I'm just saying, there might be some opportunities, just we take a look with this, as a little bit of a refresh.
Okay, good. Our discussion items, let's start with the budget, now do I understand, did I hear, Dave, you have a presentation?
A few slides.
Are you sure the blueprint, I was trying to delay this a little bit. We're ready, this works great.
I'm all for this, actually.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, this is the easier one, so.
She and I were talking about how, I was thinking later was better, and she was thinking earlier was better, but.
Leanne's always right.
Well, as Dave and Leanne are coming forward here, I just want to take the opportunity to share with the board that, you know, Dave started about a week and a half ago, almost two weeks now, I guess, but we have the fourth in there and some, you know, transition time, and hit the ground running. On the other hand, also wanted to certainly take a opportunity to really look hard at our budget, you know, the end of the year as well as moving forward, and him and Leanne, I want to commend them and several of their staff over the last two weeks, really digging into this and trying to get a complete understanding of where we've been, where we're at today, and maybe where we're headed, so with that be said, I'm going to turn it over to them and let them walk you through the work they've been doing, and there is, you know, a memo that was attached, and I certainly appreciate the board's patience as we were, you know, working on that even late last night, trying to finalize the latest scenario as of today. So I'll turn it over to Dave.
Thank you, I think one of the things that Brian mentioned is really important, Leanne and the rest of the business office staff have really worked hard, and it's not easy for them with a transition in place either, so for me, a lot of this is new, and I just really want to mention, you know, Leanne's worked really hard with her team to help support me as I've gotten here, and putting stuff together for the budget, and I'm very, very appreciative of that, so, thank you for this opportunity to talk with you. This presentation, the information that we have for you right now is preliminary information, and there's a bunch of moving parts that are happening right now, and it's important as we start to talk about some of the numbers, that we keep some of these things in mind. I remember back when I was in the private sector, working with forecasts and budgets, I always had to caution some of our P and L owners, be careful about what number you say to the board, because whatever number you start with is the only number they're going to remember, it doesn't matter what you change later, and so I just want to be, you know, to really remind you of some of these things that are going on that we've got on here, so, yes, we've got a whole bunch of things, we, you know, we've got, of course, I'm new, we've got our audit coming up, so what we're talking about are pre-audit numbers, and we will have some audit adjustments that will happen, we've just barely finished booking some of our stuff at year-end. There's Cook County, which is always an interesting county to work with, and I think you know, I've worked in Cook County before as well, and there's some things that happened in Cook County as we get into this year that we'll talk a little more about, we've got some change in transportation, not change in transportation, new contract and some things going on with transportation that complicated our analysis this year, timing of state revenue, which was another factor, we just finished negotiating a couple contracts, that was something else that was going on, and then we've got some prepayment of taxes, that is, you know, these have just all been different moving parts that take it away from a plain vanilla, here's what's going on, so I just want to lay the groundwork a little bit so that, you know, we're still at a preliminary level. So we'll start with talking about pre-audit results from this past fiscal year on the revenue side. So the first thing I want to talk about is the change in federal tax code that has resulted in the inability for deductibility in property taxes, so this is a, this caused people to want to pay their taxes early, so at the end of December, we saw some people paying taxes early. Some people might have paid a year's worth of taxes early, some might have just paid their spring installment early, and that's happened in all four counties, so when we take a look at our property tax receipts, we know that we have received some additional money this year, in the spring, this last fiscal year, that we normally would get later, some of that might have simply come in in the springtime, so a few months later, some might have not come in until now this fall, when we would be actually looking at a different fiscal year. So that's, it's tough for us to say exactly what that breakout is, because we can't get the information at the level of detail yet that we would like, and.
Yeah, we have made several calls to the point where.
Sure we can't be the only ones asking.
No, we aren't, to the point where I think the Cook County lady finally hung up on me yesterday, because I called her so many times, but no, we are not the only ones, and we're backing into some numbers and making some assumptions based on what the total levy should be, but the level of detail, the example that Dave used about, did somebody make one installment earlier, or did they make both installments early, that is a level of detail that we don't have at this time, and we may or may not have.
So Cook County isn't giving you a definitive answer, like, we'll have that information in a month, they're just.
No, and Lake, McHenry, and Kane have all said, your first payment in May was pre-tax, excuse me, pre-payment dollars, but they haven't given us any level of detail whether that was both installments or one installment.
And we don't think we'll get that.
Right, but we're backing into some numbers to make some predictions.
And would we have the ability in our audit to just designate some portion of that as a receivable?
Yeah, so I talked with our partner, our audit firm today, and generally, we've gotten the money, so we're, so we're going to book it, and, so what that means, just as we, as we think about this next year, what that means is that, I'm just going to toss out a number, let's say we got $5 million worth of prepayment taxes in late December that normally we wouldn't get until this fall, so what that means is that we don't want to budget that $5 million in next year's budget, because we already got it, so we would then tend to reflect lower revenues this next fall, because, and it's just a timing issue, it's nothing about how we're operating our budget, it's just a timing thing, we would recognize $5 million early in this past year, and then we wouldn't, we wouldn't record it in this next year, but we're still working on that, so we're trying to get some more information, and we'll come back to you with sort of where things have shaken out as we continue to research this over the next couple of weeks, so.
To your point, Brian, do you think that we're going to show a large opportunity surplus this year, and then a large deficit next year?
Well, that would be unfortunate, we don't want to do that.
Is there any way through our audit team to kind of smooth that out a little bit?
It's possible, that may happen, we'll come back as we, you know, as we continue to work on this, because one of the challenges is trying to figure out, as Leanne was saying, well, how much of it really is stuff that we would have gotten in the fall, and we don't know, so then you're starting to take a little bit of a guess, you know, if you don't know, and I don't know, so we're working on that to see, can we get additional information, and we'll work through that with our auditors, and we'll provide more information back for you, so. The other thing that we've noticed about Cook County, and this is not just our district, but refunds, property tax refunds are unusually high during this past year, two to three times higher than what we would normally experience, I mean, that's not just been us, that has been.
Is it dollar valium?
Right, right now in Cook.
Yeah, just above a frost.
Right now, it's 2.9 million, and we're typically only about 700,000, that does include the 1.1 for.
AT&amp;T.
AT&amp;T, so you're at about 1.8, which is about three, a little bit more than three times what we normally have refund, and we're digging into this, this Dave doesn't even know, but as I was walking out of the door at 5 o'clock, Valerie got all those reports with level of detail, just as we were walking out, I didn't have a chance to mention that to you, so she is digging through all those now, and Eris also said that, just in the last couple of weeks, he's been contacted by several districts with the same concern, and he is digging into some of these things for some of the other districts, not PTAB related, not PTAB related.
This is staying all through the circuit court.
Correct, so he's seen this happen.
And less than $100,000.
Correct, and.
But just, this is a lot of them.
Yeah, and a lot of the quick report, literally, I just glanced at the reports, a lot from 2011 refunds, a lot from 2012 refunds.
And I don't know what Eris will ultimately tell us, but I know that in the past, sometimes the court just, you know, they run out of room for the file boxes in their hallway, and they end up just processing a whole bunch of stuff, and it clears stuff out, and then you see a big slug come through, whether that's the case this time, we don't know yet, and we're continuing to work on it, so, but that's not just us, so that's been other districts as well.
It doesn't make me feel that much better, because I'm not responsible for their financials, just ours.
Understand, but it's at least sharing that this is not a, it's not a unique thing, so many districts are looking for the same answer, so.
We're digging as deep as we can.
Yeah, we may have to advocate for a legislative fix to this, to be honest with you.
It's a problem.
Because they can't do this.
Correct.
So we're, you know, as we look at our revenue, typically, you know, as we take a look at what would be the spring revenue from Cook County due to, from property taxes, we're actually tracking right about where we normally would at this point in time, but we think, we're not sure that with the prepayments that we received, and the additional refunds that we've done, we don't think they should offset each other, we think we should have more taxes than normal right now, because we think that the prepayments exceed the refunds that have happened, and so we're.
We're going to catch up to it.
Well, so we're.
Yeah, right, that's a problem.
We're looking at that, because, you know, that might leave us light on property tax levy revenue, and we're digging into that, so we're looking to have more information on exactly where we stand, but this has been a complicating factor that we've really been working hard on, so. This last year, we did recognize five categorical payments from the state of Illinois, you might recall, typically we get four, and most years, that it's four, and lately it's been three current and one prior year that have come in, the state's had a rolling one payment lag, they sort of fell behind two, now they, we caught up with one during this last year, so we actually recognized five categorical payments.
And just to clarify, I remember, we talked about this in Brian's office today, it was three from FY '18, and two, we only booked two categoricals last year, so we have two FY '17 in here, three FY '18, and one is still due to us, so I just wanted to make sure, with Dave being new, that that was, everybody heard the same message.
Of the five that are already here, right, I think we have to recognize those.
Correct, and we won't know the timing of the next one.
So.
But at some point, given where we are here in July, wouldn't we have some flexibility to push that off?
You would think, yes.
Typically, 60 days, so, you know, what our auditors would do is say, well, if you're getting something that's for the prior year, and you're getting it within 60 days of the end of the fiscal year, they will want to pull it back into the prior year. I have to be honest, I'm not anticipating that fifth, or that, the fourth categorical payment from FY '18 to show up until well beyond the end of August, so I don't think we're really going to be faced with a question about when to recognize that, I think we'll only be recognizing that as we look at FY '19. So we're looking at, for next year, just a little preview to a coming slide, we're looking at four categorical payments, which would be three current and one prior year, so it'd be the one from FY '18, and three from FY '19, and that will leave us at the end of next year, having gotten four, and still behind one, so I don't see if the state's financial condition has improved enough with enough cash availability for them to fully catch up on their categorical payments. That sort of leads us to the additional preschool for all funds, we've not received those funds yet, as we mentioned earlier, if we get those between now and the end of August, we would likely be looking at booking it last year, that's what our auditor's normal approach would be for that. I don't think that's going to come in either, that's a fair bit of money, I think the state wanted to get it accounted for, and I think they will pay it out as funds become available, I'm anticipating that will likely be an FY '19 receipt, probably could be similar timing to when we receive our last payment for this year's, this past year's categoricals. So as we look at, on the expense side, last, this last year was the first year of a new transportation contract, and in building the budget, we worked hard to try and estimate out what things would look like, in order to make sure that we still provided the same quality level of service for our families and our students, as the year started, we did end up adding a number of routes at various schools, we did end up with a fairly significant additional expense on the transportation expense side. We did have some additional expenses on the substitute side, where we ran over our budgeted amount, and we're working on digging into that to make sure that we understand how that came about, and making sure that we're able to manage that carefully as we go forward in this next year. In the same way, on the, I'm actually going to jump down to the bottom point I have on here, the classified staff side in the education fund, so that would be aides in classrooms, clerical and other support staff, those salary expenditures did exceed the budget, you know, what we expected in the budget, and the business office and the human resources department have been working on that, and will continue to work on that to make sure that we really understand what happened there on the budget versus actual variance, and so we'll be able to provide more information to you. In the education fund for certified staff, on the detail, on the attachment that we have, there's a couple of different lines that cover the certified staff, the mix may not be exactly right on the budget versus the actual, but when you add them together, we were pretty much spot on, we're spot on with certified staff, so. All right, as we look at this next year, just wanted to take a moment just to remind As the year started, we did end up adding a number of routes at various schools. We did end up with a fairly significant additional expense on the transportation expense side. We did have some additional expenses on the substitute side, where we ran over our budgeted amount. And we're working on digging into that to make sure that we understand how that came about, and making sure that we're able to manage that carefully as we go forward in this next year. In the same way, on the, I'm actually gonna jump down to the bottom point I have on here. The classified staff side in the education fund, so that would be aides in classrooms, clerical and other support staff. Those salary expenditures did exceed the budget, you know, what we expected in the budget. And the business office and the human resources department have been working on that, and we'll continue to work on that to make sure that we really understand what happened there on the budget versus actual variance. And so we'll be able to provide more information to you. In the education fund for certified staff, on the detail, on the attachment that we have, there's a couple of different lines that cover the certified staff. The mix may not be exactly right on the budget versus the actual, but when you add them together, we were pretty much spot on. We're spot on with certified staff, so. All right, as we look at this next year, just wanted to take a moment just to remind you of the assumptions that we had back in January that you had discussed, and we set in terms of financial planning. And these were used to help inform and guide the preparation of the preliminary budget, and we continue to keep these in mind as we move forward. But we'll talk about some situations in which some of these numbers are a little bit different than what we were thinking back in January. On the revenue side, just talking about state funding, this is our second year of evidence-based funding. And the state has really worked hard to make sure that general state aid, and now the evidence-based funding, comes in on time and regularly for school districts. We're anticipating that to remain the same as we go forward. But given where we are from an adequacy standpoint, I'm not anticipating that we're going to see a lot of additional state revenue from the evidence-based funding model. As we, maybe slightly more than that, but not a lot more than that.
No, that was right.
Yeah, that was a zero.
That was right.
I saw Brian's zero, maybe a couple bucks.
It wasn't zero.
Oh, okay, all right.
A little bit, it was a few.
Sorry, I thought you did this, yeah.
Close as I get my fingers.
That's right.
We talked about the prepayment, and we continue to work, you know, very hard on this to provide some clarity so that we can make sure that we're working this in. Leanne and I have heard the comments from the board and thoughts about, you know, whether we're showing a deficit or a surplus. And we will be working on that, and we'll provide more information on what we can do, so. We're working on the transportation reimbursement as well. That is not a completely straightforward process, so it's a little bit of involved calculation. But we had additional expenses. We're anticipating that we'll likely get additional revenue. But we want to make sure we're doing the work. Leanne and her team are really digging into that to try and estimate out where do we think we'll be, and is what we have built in our preliminary numbers right now the right amount, or might it be more? So we're looking into that. And then, you know, we touched on the preschool for all funds. Right now, on a preliminary basis, you know, I think our thought is, we're probably not going to see that, we didn't see it during this last fiscal year. We may not see it in the next month or two. We have to put it somewhere. So it's either gonna show up in last year's actuals, or it's going to show up in next year's budget. At the moment, it's sitting in next year's budget, so it would just be a late payment that would come in this next year. More to come on that, based on, you know, whether we get any more indication from the state when they'll pay it, and conversations on our auditors. So we'll keep you updated on that. Then on the expense side, you know, we have folded in the settlement with both of our associations. So those were numbers that were different from the CPI assumption that was built in, or that was assumed back in January. So, you know, because of that, we've really tried to look at the purchase services and supplies amounts to try to keep them at or below the financial model assumptions, to make sure that we can offset those at least as much as we can. We did fold in the new stadium scoreboard. Please keep in mind that, based on the agreements, it's likely that we will only see 20% of those commitments in each year. But we're paying for the scoreboard upfront. So what would happen is we'd pay for the scoreboard, and then over five years, then we would receive the revenue. So we've got 20% built in on the revenue side, and 100% of the cost in the first year, and then you would see that flip-flop where we'd have zero cost built in for the scoreboard and 20% of the revenue in the next four years after this. And then, at this point, we're not seeing that we will likely have a significant difference in transportation costs from where we were last year in order to provide the same level of service. Now, I will tell you that I have not had time to dig in with my team on that, but Leanne and I have met with June Nillis to try and really go through that. Where are we? And we'll continue to do that to understand, are there opportunities for efficiencies? Are there things that we can do that were not going to affect service, but that we think will result in a more favorable cost experience for the community? And so we're working on that.
I'm sorry, kind of a side note, have we had GPS systems installed on the fleet yet or no? Because that was kind of a hope, is maybe we can get some operational efficiency with some of the more recent data?
I think that they're in process of being, yeah, being put in right now. And I think as we get into the first couple months of the school year, all of that technology will then be completely functional and rolled out. And then we're going to see, we know that we're gonna get much better information on the billing and cost side for us to be able to analyze. So we're, you know, a little selfish part of the little business office, we're really excited about that. So we think that's really gonna help us.
We're excited too.
Yeah, yeah. So, and it's gonna be great for families. I mean, that's, of course, really the big reason, and that's really gonna be terrific. So as we look at the budget calendar, of course, we do have, not shown on here, but we do have a finance committee meeting on August 1st. So we'll have new information at that point in time and an update. The tentative budget on August 14th, the public hearing on September 4th, and then opportunity for you to consider a final budget adoption on September 18th. And then our obligation is to then file that approved budget by the end of September.
The finance committee meeting is on the 1st?
That's correct, 7:30.
7:30.
And it's going to be at the new administrative office. So that should be very exciting.
Facilities is immediately following.
Right after. Correct.
So if you come for one, you better stay for both.
In for a dime, in for a dollar, right?
I mean, you gotta come for both, then.
That's what I said.
And that includes the later meeting, you gotta come to the earlier one, too.
I agree with you.
It's a twofer. It's a twofer.
Yeah, 7:30 and then 8:30, back to back.
Such a value. It's like seeing two movies for the price of one.
7:30 AM, correct.
The 1st, August 1st, Wednesday. And we do have the air conditioning working there, so it will be comfortable for all of your meetings over there.
So the public hearing is not on the 4th, though, right?
September 4th. September 4th will be the public hearing.
Got it. It's like you have done a lot of work, but you still have a lot to do.
Prior to-
Busy 10 days or so.
You know, prior to the 1st, can you just, so the board can kind of go through, you know, a review, can you send that spreadsheet out, the workbook, you know, in Excel form, so people can do whatever it is they want to do? So they can prepare for that meeting on the 1st.
Anything else, board members?
Just, the, you mentioned the scoreboard out of capital, capital projects, correct?
We did put it in Fund 60 right now.
I don't know what that is.
That's the capital projects fund.
Sorry, I thought I had read that, but I just wanted to clarify, because-
Not capital in-
To your point in the memo, that's where the funds will flow into.
Correct.
Therefore, it's not coming out of, okay.
That's correct.
Correct. I just wanted to make sure I was-
That's what we did in the past, yeah. Yeah, with this magnitude of an expense and the nature of it, that would be a very appropriate place to have it-
Yes.
Have the funds flow through.
If I'm a budget standpoint, how much are we allocating for the new building across the street in this fiscal year versus next fiscal year?
Yeah, I think it's, look, at this point, it's just what the purchase price in this year, because we don't have, we haven't approved it. I think it goes to facilities on that same, it's on August 1st date, is that when you guys were meeting? So we haven't approved anything. So by the time we approve it, it's gonna have to come out of the next year, I think.
Probably will.
But again, I mean, look, it's six of one half dozen of another, right? If we have the surplus, if we end up with a big surplus because of the timing of all these things, we'll just have to figure out how much of it we want to transfer over to capital projects, you know, to absorb the extra capital in fiscal year 19. Or we have to figure out some way to transfer it or reserve it in the fund balance, so we don't end up running a deficit if it's really of a big magnitude, right?
I think some of us can bet on the revenue scenario and what you might weigh in on.
Yeah, it's really, I mean, the magnitude of the tax prepayment in these tax refunds have got me a little-
I mean, without the extra state grants.
It's gonna catch up, is what I was-
We've been talking about all that over the last few days, that's exactly right.
Yeah, I'll see how the numbers all fall out.
I'm not sure, my memory's not with me tonight. I'm not sure if we're gonna have, I do not believe we're having bids to look at on August 1st.
No, it'll be September.
Right, so even on August 1st, at that meeting, we, facilities won't have anything.
No. You're gonna have a preliminary, you know, concept stuff, and then some cost estimates as well.
But we, and we already sort of have an idea what that is, so. I just wanted to anchor the expectation in terms of this timeline, what we'll have at that point.
Yeah. That is a good time to be able to talk about what the impact might be on a tentative budget as well. And even with some estimates and ideas, and I think having those two meetings right next to each other will really be valuable.
14th, sorry.
And then, I think the memo said that the auditors will begin in September, is that right?
Second, second of the week in September. And remember, we talked about- About the timing of it, they had said if they did make it coming out earlier than that, then they'd probably end up coming again because of some things, so they made that-
Somehow it has to go to November, December, I don't know why.
Yeah, but that was, but we can discuss audit, you know, more with Dave, I can bring him up to speed on that.
Good questions on the budget. Good job.
Wait, I hit one. The tax repayments, or the tax objections?
Oh, the refunds.
The refunds, sorry. You said you just got the list.
Just did, and the list looks like a bunch of amounts, and it has like a reason or a code.
Okay.
And then, that's all we have. And then, so I told Valerie to dig into it, to compare it, because she gets like a monthly report of these, not a monthly, but anytime there's a dispersment, she gets a report with the receipts versus the refunds. And so she's kind of comparing the report she got today to that, and then she's looking at the reason codes and doing some, she's gonna, we're all day tomorrow, that's the only thing she's working on tomorrow, so.
And that is in a form, that's understandable.
Right.
Could you share that with us?
I'll share it with Dave, and absolutely.
Yep.
Absolutely. She's got her head around it pretty well.
It's hard to explain to people without having some more information.
And that's why she's kind of taking what she had and curating it, so that it makes more sense.
They're all under that $100,000 mark, but there's a lot of them.
I noticed 188 today, but I don't know what that one was, so.
And one of the interesting things here, of course, is with four counties, we have three that do things in a pretty normal way. And one that doesn't. I'm not gonna mention any particular names of counties.
The ones that was on the first slide of the presentation tonight.
Yeah, so, you know, and most counties will actually deal with all this stuff in a very timely fashion or up in front of issuing tax bills. So a lot of this stuff gets settled early on, and districts collect exactly what they're supposed to. And because Cook, it's so far in arrears that everything comes out of your current dispersments, and while you might normally get a 99% collection rate, but then you have to net out all these, you know, historical refunds, that there's no legal provision for districts to be able to recoup. It's tough. You know, that's the issue.
And if it went through review, the review board, we would get notification.
Yeah, it doesn't.
And that's the frustrating thing.
We don't get anything, they just don't, they just take it out of the proceeds. That's what they did with AT&amp;T, you know, and they're just saying, well, we're just taking out the proceeds.
Well, and Eris has no way of knowing that that's-
Correct. He's only involved in our PTAB refunds.
Or over 100,000.
Over 100,000, correct. No, they took it out of it.
Took it out of the proceeds for this coming year. If you take a look at, you know, the detail from the county, what you would see is, oh, here's a dispersment. Oh, but you had a negative $700,000. So, oh, so you just got a new $100,000 dispersment, now you only owe $600,000. And so over a long period of time, as these little pieces start to come in, all you see is it whittles down your negative balance. And then eventually, we get to the, you know, the beginning of this calendar year, and we started getting the prepayments in, the other things that finally brought us to a positive amount where they actually issued funds to us. Otherwise, they just do it as a deduction.
Okay, thank you. We will look forward to the next month or two as we kind of work our way through all this. Okay, our next discussion item is an update on Blueprint 220, and part of our ongoing conversation. Now, do you have a presentation ready?
Do not, but obviously got some documents here.
Yeah, so in our, so there's lots of things for us to talk about, right? In our last conversation, one of the things we did was ask Brian to kind of try to sort through, you know, different approaches that different districts have done, right? And he gave us a nice memo about different levels of activities that consultants have done with a ballpark price from different levels of activity, including some districts that kind of use community members, a wide range of stuff. We also, I think, talked about what it would take, you know, to try to finalize the facility plan. And we have, I think, a nice memo that Brian included, I think that Jason had done, about some of the issues there. Which of those two would you guys like to start with? How about, you wanna start with the master facility plan? That seems to make some sense. Jason, do you wanna summarize, or do you wanna highlight anything from your memo?
Hopefully, it was pretty clear and straightforward. I think it's important to consider the longevity of the plan and not necessarily be burdened by an initial phase versus, you know, what might happen long-term in the future. And so, just as the 14 did over the process, if you think strategically and work your way backwards from sort of the top down rather than from the bottom up, you'll be able to capture some of those planning considerations that would eliminate any duplication. For example, if you build a plan from the bottom up and you start at the smallest component, you may end up doing some work in the short term that would be changed or altered in the long term with a larger move, a larger strategic move, like perhaps a new community school or third middle school, or some of the larger pieces in consideration. So from the memo, I recommended that the board consider from the higher levels down to the lower levels, and then phases finances are available or comfortable for the board moving forward. So really think about this as sort of a living document. We don't print these anymore and sit them on a shelf. They live online digitally, and they're able to be updated and altered as board plans and district plans change over time. So hopefully, there's some comfort in that, that there's not this big approval or big adoption of a finalized plan that can never change, that there's some flexibility in that over time.
Do you have any questions for Jason, those right up? One of the kind of key decision points that we've talked around a little bit as a group, and I guess I'm still not sure I know kind of where we are, right, is when we think of a master plan, a master facilities plan, and we accept Jason's suggestion, which, you know, makes sense to me, right? That whatever it is, it's a living document, right? The plan, right, is a plan, right? Now, we're gonna end up having to figure out, right, how to chunk it out based on budget realities. And that, too, is gonna be a living approach that this board and other boards will wrestle with over time, right? But it seems to me that the master plan itself has, as part of its living structure, has some options to it, right? So for instance, I mean, I'll take, I'll take one of our oldest style metro buildings, Sunny Hill, right? I mean, I, look, Sunny Hill, I think at some point Sunny Hill needs a new building, right? It's an old enough building, and there's enough structural issues and constraints to it. To think that that's going to still be a good building 25 years from now is kind of hard for me to imagine, right? So to me, having a master facility plan, right, that retains Sunny Hill as a new Sunny Hill, or I'd make the same argument, by the way, on Hough, right, or a new Hough, right? I think as part of the master facility plan, having that decision- I think as part of the master facility plan, having that decision point at some point in the future makes sense. Based on the conversations that we've had today, right, I don't think either one of those, right, kind of rises to probably what's in the scope of what we're going to try to tackle now, right? But that doesn't mean that it can't be a decision point at some point in the future, based on stuff, right? So to me, a master facility plan is essentially kind of how each building, each campus would mature or grow up, and there's some decision points in them, right? And I think as a community, you know, we're representing the seven members, right, we're representing the community today, right? And, and, but the community needs could change over time, right? I mean, and, and so, and I think as those needs change, you want to go back and iterate off of whatever that master plan is. So to me, I think the work that's been done so far, you know, with, with all of those campuses, and, and certain decision points, I'm, I'm personally kind of fine with that ambiguity, right? But I also understand that there may be an argument that says that the master plan should make those decisions now, right? That we should say, we're gonna build a new Sunny Hill at some point, we're gonna build a new Hough, right? So that's what I'm trying to figure out, I mean, are we okay with the kind of options and decision points in the plan, or do we feel we need to make all those decisions now?
I, I feel like we have to have ambiguity, to use your word, because there are so many factors that going, go into making a substantial change in our facilities possible. And some of those are beyond our control. So, it's very difficult, I'll use our facilities plan as an example, I mean, we've had high school auditorium as a placeholder since I've been on the board. And, you know, I had a, a friend of mine say, and, you know, she was sincere, okay, so, let's see, one, two, three, four, okay, next year, new, new auditorium, right? This was a number of years ago, because it was a five-year plan, and it was in the fifth era. You know, she took it very literally, and so I think that we need to have the ambiguity and the, because, and we need to be able to explain that to the community, because I feel like in some cases, what we've come so far in our conversations, people have been kind of laser focused on individual little pieces.
How do others feel?
I would agree, I mean, it's two totally separate conversations. And there are so many variables and factors and enrollments, I mean, you can name a hundred of them right here, on what will dictate on where we're gonna allocate a certain amount of funding to fix certain gaps, but certainly need a facility, a long-term facility plan in place, that I don't think will be reflective of necessarily kind of on the immediate timeframe from Blueprint 220. But there's certainly a lot of gaps that, as we look long-term, how we want the district to look.
Yeah, I think the other thing that was in the memo, what, I can't find it right now, but it's here, was the, the idea that having that larger plan would help guide our decisions in making substantial investments in any particular building. And so, let's say, you know, you used Hough as an example, let's say something came up at Hough, and it, it was going to cost X, and X was a large number. It might bring us back to the table to say, okay, is this the time to go after this? And would make us have some conversations about it.
It's the Jane Street Windows conversation.
It is, it is, yes, exactly.
You get to a certain point where you say, okay, this is it, right? Your maintenance cost exceeds what the long-term value of the building is.
And I think it would, it would help in facilities for us to look at even longer term, when we're considering our summer projects. Because, you know, as we pointed out earlier this year, the pro, some, many of the projects that are on our list that are being taken care of this summer, actually fall, are already in that first column of maintenance things that needed to be done. And so, you know, we can definitely chip away, they're little, small chips, but it would help guide some of those decisions.
I think it'd also be good, though, to, to set those expectations, so let's, just gonna throw out numbers, which is always a dangerous thing, but, and I, I didn't go back and look at the costs in that first column for Sunny Hill and for Hough, but they were significant, more significant than the other schools, is my recollection. Rose was big too, though, because of the, because of the, the plumbing, the sewer. But, I guess this is the decision point, Brian, I think that you talked about. So, if we make those improvements on those two schools, what's, then, what does that do to life expectancy? Does it push it out ten years, does it push it out, at what point do you need to make a decision? I think it'd be good for us to, to talk about that and to communicate that, because what I would hate to have happen, which I think is what you were alluding to, is that we decided to go forward and do all of them, and then a year later we say, oh my, the windows need to re, you know? Then we come up with that thing that throws us over the top, and we lament not-
Right, we'd spent money that's-
We spent money that were, were, you know, didn't, didn't meet that timeframe, whatever we decide it is, whether it's five years, ten years, three years, whatever, as long as we have that conversation, I'm comfortable.
And I think that-
I just want to make sure we have that conversation.
I, I want to be very careful about, about saying that, you know, in a facilities, in a facilities committee, we're very, very careful about the projects we bring forward for those reasons. And in my time on the board, I don't think that we've had to undo anything that we've done, and if we have, it's been relatively small, because it was such a necessary thing. So, I think that, you know, I don't want to create any thought that we're not already kind of doing that, but I think to have a, a larger plan would make, make that even better process.
Do you want to jump in here with a comment?
I did, so, when you consider the lifecycle period in a building, they're in general thirty-year increments, okay? So, most major systems that you put in a building have a pile that shelf, like be it a roof, be it a mechanical system, your walls, your exterior envelope, brick and block, you know, that has a longer period, a longer lifespan, say seventy-five years. So when you make an investment in a storm system or a sanitary system out of a facility, you're not necessarily increasing the lifecycle of that, that facility. You're still gonna have to continually renew those things, that thing that you install is going to require maintenance over time, and it, too, those pumps and those systems. But you have one sort of global ticking clock. In districts with multiple facilities built over multiple time periods with maintenance plans and things like that, you have these many different clocks that are ticking at all of your facilities, and so it's, it's gonna be a perpetual loop. So I think flexibility is an important, perhaps adjective that the, the board could consider, but with a target in mind. You know, if, if the costs identified thus far have been, or met a certain threshold for value at the border community level, then set that target for replacement and make incremental investments accordingly, right? Don't jump in too far to figure out five years later, to your point, that, oh boy, we maybe should have made a different decision, you know, five years sooner. So, if you utilize the master facility plan as target setting, to say that these are our goals with these facilities, based on the information at hand, you can then allocate finance-
You have given us a couple of interesting data points, I'm not sure I can tell you where I've seen them, right? But I think at one point in one of your write-ups, in one of your presentations, you talked about kind of a tipping point on, I can't remember if it was like forty or fifty percent of building new? Sixty, right? So when you start getting, I mean, having some guidelines like that to kind of help guide future planning and decision-making, you know, would be good. I think we would appreciate, you know, collectively, you know, from both your organizations, some guidance on that. The other thing that, and I, and, and I don't know where I saw it, but I saw somewhere a calculation, and I don't know, Jason, one of your things, or Lance, one of your things, about, you know, kind of some rules of thumb about replacement costs, you know, over that thirty-year. For some reason I want to, there was a number, there was a number that stuck in my head, I want to say it was like six or seven million dollars a year based on our square foot and our buildings. Was that, did I see that from you guys?
You may have, we, we can go back and provide some guidance. The sixty percent threshold is an industry benchmark, it's not a hard and fast rule, and you need to make your own decisions. And then there are a couple of other factors, if you look at the existing age of a facility and at sixty percent, you know, like energy code is gonna save you in operations over time versus an existing facility versus a new facility. Those kinds of things all play into the, you know, that target setting of when you might consider a closing. So we can provide additional guidance at your request, that's not a problem.
I think, you know, it was interesting when, at the last Baycoff meeting, you know, I shared, Brian and I did a quick presentation on kind of where we were with Blueprint 220, and we shared, you know, the big sheet with all the different options, right? And one of the first questions from one of the Baycoff members, right, was, and this includes a third middle school, right? And we said, well, no, I mean, in the last column it does, but some of the community feedback we got says that may be a little bit too much, right? So it's not that we don't value it, right? But it may not make kind of this first tranche of, of referendum plan, right? Then the next question was, well, what about all of these big developments we're hearing in Hoffman Estates, right? Because, you know, we've been obviously talking with Baycoff about that, right? Well, yeah, so now what happens is, right, if you've got a nice master facility plan, and you get, you get, you know, these big things that hit, and you say, okay, now we're gonna need a third middle school, this is how it looks, here's roughly the price, right? You're able to kind of quantify that whole planning process in trying to negotiate and navigate, you know, those developments and the, and the impact on it, right? Right, so, I, I think the, there's a whole bunch of reasons to have this master facility plan, but just responding to student growth, whether it be from new developments or organic growth, because we still have more rooftops in New York right now, is, is really kind of what we need this for. But a lot of those decisions are gonna be predicated on a stimulus of new students. Sometimes it's gonna be a building's falling apart, other times it's gonna be new students. Yeah, I mean, right, the whole full-day kindergarten is indicated, you know, there's, there's issues we have.
I mean, we, we saw tonight how that has impacted our room, room utilization in elementary.
So, so are, are we comfortable with the work that's been presented to us to date about each of the campuses, and even some of the new buildings, a bigger community school, and stuff? I mean, are, are we comfortable that collectively that makes up a master facility plan?
Well, I guess one question, as I thought about, you know, that point, you know, there were some things that we included in that presentation, because we thought people would ask. So, example, raise and rebuild the high school. So if something like that really isn't an option, I mean, we put it there so we'd have the answer if someone asked how much it would cost. You know, I'm wondering if we should go through with kind of a critical eye and-
Yeah, it's a good point, because I don't know-
Scrub a little bit.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea.
What's a blind point, if you have a significant amount of developments? Could this structure withhold an influx of, of new students?
We need a lot.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
But that proposal was raised and rebuilt, not build in addition to.
Not in its current form. You could always do a freshman center, you could do, I mean, there's, when you get into those scenarios, there's other ways to look for, I'm just saying, that's a conversation for another time, but-
Right.
There's ways to reconfigure. If, the board at that time would have to make that decision. Do you keep, you know, nine twelve in one site, do you start thinking differently about that? Look at other big high schools, they split campuses, they do different things, just saying. But that requires another building. Absolutely, or reconfiguring.
That's different than building an entire new high school.
Well, and it wasn't just, we have one building right now, what was included in that was raising this, putting it, I mean, if, and it wasn't adding significant amount of space to accommodate growth. It was, so, growth would have to be addressed in another way.
Yeah, or you go up.
So, I mean, if that's, if that's something we're thinking about, though, maybe there should be a component of ea, of the high school, of each level, if you will, that is an option if there's significant growth is seen. And maybe that's just redoing the proposal of the high school.
That's what that scenario is, hypothetically, there should be some incremental revenue that comes in to help.
Yeah, well, it won't come close to offset.
No, no, offsetting, but-
It will be part of it.
Part of the discussion.
So if, if we were to go through a review of the materials that have been presented to us, to your point, with a more critical eye, how do we do that? Is that something we do, do we try to engage the core team again?
Why don't we have the administration kind of look at what the response was from the public, I mean, we've got all that information now. I'm not sure we asked the public about the, I'm not sure we asked the public about the core team's work. I thought we asked the public more about our proposal, what they would be willing to go up to. And my only concern about, about, I don't know, I sort of feel like, to be honest, that it should be us looking at it, because we're the ones, I hate to have Brian and his staff spend time doing that, when in the end, we're the ones making that decision, and-
So, not, not, it's easy for me to, to kind of-
I think it's gotta be a little joint, though, too, I mean-
But is this something that you guys and Facility, along with, you know, the admin and everything with Facility, just do a-
I, I'm watching. Slide in my way.
Just a thought, just a thought.
Great idea.
Mike's smiling, or he likes-
Honey, you were asking.
And you're gonna make me stay for your meeting, no. Well-
I mean, look, I don't think, to your point-
To the board and say, this is why we would suggest-
To your point, I don't think that this is like a really kind of detailed, I mean, there's a lot of work there, right? I think it's just more of those really big things, like, do we want to include the new heights?
So we could go through and probably create some questions, you know, yes or no, yes or no.
Touchpoints, right, and then just guide us through, maybe at our August meet, I mean, if you, I don't know if you have time at your August first meeting, if not, maybe in September. And then you, oh, you're, what do you-
Well, I'm just, I, I guess, you know, and Joe's not here either, and I, you know, I just want to, I, I'd like to get a little clarity from the board, what you want Penny and Joe to do, you know, so we just, you know, I don't want to create something that then that's, you know, it's not what you really want. So, do you want us to say, hey, this is, I, I'm thinking out loud here, do you, do you want us to say, here's the components, when I say us, it's the facilities committee? Do you want us to work with, you know, the facilities committee and say, here's the things that, for every building that should be in the plan, okay? Somehow it should be there, and here's some things that probably should not be in it, right, based on, or do you want us to, I mean, I, I guess I'm looking for some direction here, if we can do anything, I just want to make sure we meet expectations. The bigger question is, how many years do we want to look out? You could start there, that's a good guiding- Then you can kind of back into useful life of facilities and things like that. Twenty years, is it five years, is it?
See, that's, now, now you're starting, you know, a much more detailed plan, I mean, look, each, to me, and I'm gonna add, so here, I'll, I'll, I'll go first and you guys break this apart, right? Because to me, I'm gonna tell you, I think it's a twenty to thirty-minute exercise, right? It's to take the work that has been presented to us for each campus, right? And not necessarily go through each line item and a critical thing, but look for just really big, high-level questions like, do we want- but look for just really big, high level questions like, do we want to include the demolition of the high school as, as an option?
Yes or no?
Yeah. Because I think we all kind of bought in overall to the plan, right? So it's just more of those real, I mean, and I'm not necessarily, I mean, to me, I'm not necessarily looking for additions, although that's not to say that if you have an idea for an addition that hasn't come up yet, we wouldn't think about it, right? But I'm more interested in just big, high level stuff. Does this make sense to include in there? Otherwise, I, I kind of start with the, the basic plan for each campus and say, it's a good plan.
Could do that, too. Just accept what's been put together.
But that's the way I'm, I'm not, I'm not thinking of a really detailed.
That's.
So if you identify the stopping point, let's take on the high school because it's already the example, right? Level five at the high school was a new high school. Okay, well, if you want to, you don't see that in your foreseeable future, your stopping point would be level four, and you would only phase what you can fund. And the rest of the plan is a future phase.
Right.
To be funded or determined later.
Exactly.
And the, the drawing is, you know, we get rid of the level designations. We just have it Barrington High School plan. It's going to eventually go that far.
Right.
We're going to talk about these things first.
But I think before we even get to the point where you're redoing your drawings, we have this rather more informal conversation here where we say, okay, we think that, we'd like to propose that maybe you stop at level four on the high school. And then, and just.
I'm just curious. I don't want, yes, no.
Right. So at the high school, I would do that. At the elementaries, or to say, at the middle, I think everything that was in that plan makes sense, including the option of the, the third middle school. Right? At the elementaries, I thought everything up to level four makes sense. I don't know that we can do it all, but it all makes sense. It's consistent with.
Well, you get to a point of level four on some of these, and correct me if I'm wrong, but like, to rebuild, to do all the renovations at Hof, it would be cheaper to rebuild level five.
Right.
Yes.
Sunny Hills is the same.
Sunny Hills is the same. So I mean, you kind of, you can't just throw away, I think, level five because wasn't that the rebuild of most of them?
Well, I would, yeah.
Yeah, it's different depending on how much needed to be done, right? So I think we'll just take a critical look. And like, for example, at Hof, I would think that we would leave that there as an option. You know, we wouldn't cancel out one of those.
Fifteen years now, that might be the option.
Honestly, maybe the only thing we're going to come back to is, do we want to leave raising the high school on here or not?
It might.
That might be.
That might be the only question here.
But I guess maybe what I would ask you before we try to attack this is, you know, maybe if you individually could go through, and if something jumps out at you, let me know, or let Brian know.
Is there, is there anything people have right now that jumps out at you when you went through all the stuff, say?
Tearing this place down and starting over would be a difficult endeavor.
That's believable.
I think it is.
Because I remember Lance, when we had that initial discussion, you were like, this will never happen. I remember you saying that, right?
I know, but then we.
Lance is a realist.
We debated, should we even include it? And we were like, we have to.
We have to.
Because people did ask.
I just remember you saying that, Lance. He goes, this, this will never. I mean, it's just too many.
Now, there's a reason why school buildings are really old.
Yeah.
Right?
Just being practical, you know?
Yeah, there's a lot of practicality and challenges that would occur with that.
It would ever occur. Doesn't occur like that anywhere that's done major renovations in high schools.
But to your point earlier, Brian, there would be other administrative choices that you connect before you would expend those amount of dollars on stuff.
That's exactly right. There would be options that would make more sense, whatever the circumstances are.
Kind of out there.
Right. I don't know if you really go back and take a look at it, but.
Well, I think before we approve something, we should probably have a second look to make sure that we know what we're approving, if we're approving. But I guess, to take it a step further, because I'm thinking about timing. How important is it to the board to have this information or this in place when we are thinking of our, our next decisions about if we are going to put something on the ballot or not? Does it need to be in place, you know, if we, if we get it to you by the end of September, is that okay? Yeah, I don't know what's on our agenda.
Yeah, I, I think so. I just think that we should have it, we should be able to say, we've approved a master facility plan, right? That serves as the basis for referendum conversations, community engagement at some point in early fall. Right? That would be my thought.
I would think it would be helpful to have it before we start discussing with the community.
Is that going to happen?
In my opinion, I think most, if not all, the work is already done. I think it's a pretty easy decision that collectively as a team here to say, do we buy into it long term, assuming money's available and all the other balance that kind of goes into a decision-making? But I think, I think the team's done all the work already.
So does that then make you want to revisit whether the Facilities Committee has anything to do with this?
I don't, to be honest with you, I think collectively as the seven of us, you just look at it quickly and say, if something sticks out. I think the bigger facility question is, you know, when we look at level one and, you know, level two, if we're thinking about potentially a rebuild of a complete structure, do we want to invest level one and two money into a structure for three to five years as opposed to thinking more long term? That, I think, is the bigger question.
So that's going to be a different answer for each one of the buildings.
Of course.
Right?
So then I would say that if people can commit to looking through that, all of that information prior to our retreat and bringing that feedback to the retreat, that, then at our first meeting in August, we have something to vote on.
It's possible.
Or, or at least say, okay, well, we're going to, we're going to have this to vote on at our second meeting in August. Do we have two meetings at once?
Just have one.
Oh, okay.
You could do it September four.
First meeting in September.
You could do it September four.
So we don't have to be laboral.
If you get it done in September, you're fine.
Because we could say, and then you put it in the web environment that we've already got structured up. It's just a matter of populating that structure, and then that's what you're really voting on. That's it. And that's what it looks like. That's what will be, that's the plan.
And it'll be out there for people to take a look at.
And we can point to it, say, here it is.
Does this approach make sense to you two, Joan?
Which is, I think, the sooner the better on the, on the plan. I think, I think it hit it on the head a bit. You need to have that plan in place for certain community meetings and talking about the next steps.
And it'll give us an opportunity to talk about it as well and explain it.
We could have the discussion of the Facility Committee on the first if it's just this facing.
I don't, I don't, I think that.
Or just do it here.
Here's fine.
Yeah, we can do it here on the fourteenth.
Okay. All right. That'd be good. That's good.
So discussion on the fourteenth and then?
No, well, we're going to have, I thought. The retreat.
Yeah, we'll have the opportunity there.
Well, we'll decide based on the conversations we have on the thirtieth if we're okay taking action on the fourteenth or if we need further discussion. How's that?
The only concern I have, I think it's a great plan. I just don't want to confuse the community between long-term facility plan and Blueprint 220 because I think they're two totally separate topics.
Well.
Long-term facility plan and what's on the ballot is.
I would say referendum question.
Yes.
And Blueprint 220, which is a long-term facility.
Yeah, right, right.
It's the blueprint for our future.
Correct.
Referendum question is different.
Totally.
Right.
I would agree.
So before we transition into the referendum side of this thing, are we okay leaving our long-term facility plan, plan? Where we, right here where we left it, we'll talk about it on the thirtieth and then, then we'll decide if we'll take action either on the fourteenth of August or one of the meetings in September?
Yes.
Oh, we have a question.
Just a question, clarification. So if that's the case, so should I ask DLR to start to populate that website accordingly? And then we could just back out anything that the board wants to take off? That, because that's going to take some time just to transfer data, right?
I'd like to wait one more round. If there's comments at the board retreat or early August, I'd like to hear what those are before we can get back.
Yeah, okay. All right. I just, it's, you know, just got, it's a little, there's some work involved on their end, just to.
Roughly how long?
It takes about four weeks to get the website populated and the data.
Oh.
Up to speed once it's adopted.
Okay. And so from a reference perspective for us, right, all those documents are still the same as what's on the website today. Correct? We had all the campus plans, all that stuff.
We still have all of that, of course.
Right, right. That's still.
It's just a question of which diagram gets uploaded to.
Right, right. Okay. Then for our benefit, if we want to refresh our memory, all those documents, if you don't have them stored in one of your paper files, your school district, it's still available on the.
They're online. Yeah, they are. You can click on every school on those tiles and look at them.
Okay. Now let's talk about referendum stuff. So in our last meeting, right, we talked about the fact that we weren't going to try to rush this thing to a ballot in the fall, right, but that we would kind of tentatively target the spring. We talked about different approaches we wanted to consider for community engagement. And then, so we tasked Brian to come and do a little, little research on what some other districts have done. As you guys read through the different approaches that school districts have used, what were your thoughts?
I, I, Champagne was one that seemed to have a very, a plan similar to something that we had been talking about with a tier one, which would be the core team that did all that. And then a tier two that involved community members. They had very specific criteria. I mean, we had talked about a much larger net. But, you know, they had some interesting diagrams that I thought would be helpful to us if we could maybe copy them.
Stealing good ideas is always a good idea.
It's flattering. It's flattering, right?
I talked to the superintendent and she said, yeah, if anything, it's fine. That's why it's all out there.
Well, I, you know, like they had the, I can't find it right now, but, you know, there were three boxes. Board, tier one, tier two, board. I don't know. That, that wasn't exactly what we talked about, but I thought, oh, someone tried something similar and had success. And.
And how big, how big a group did they use?
Uh, I don't remember where they asked me that. Tier two.
Twenty, I thought.
I think that twenty to thirty, something.
They had one from every elected board, things like that. I mean, honestly, those were some of the, to me, that would be the.
Minimum.
The minimum. And we had talked about including all of those types of people as well. But just, like I said, a larger net. The ones that.
Did they call, what did they, did they just call it tier two? They didn't call it a referendum committee or anything?
No, because tier two was still not, it, some of the people eventually became part of a referendum committee, because I'm using these terms very, very differently, right? You've got a community group helping to form a question or inform the board. But then you've got a totally independent group of people who are proponents of the referendum, working separate from the board.
Doing the political stuff.
Right.
Which we don't do.
The other thing I noticed was the, you know, some of the, I appreciated your research into some of the companies that do this.
There's others, but these are the main ones that are most recent.
You know, and some of our, are familiar. None of their proposals really did much for me. I mean, there were, there were parts of them, parts of each, you know, like Unicom, they'd get you together for two, three hour sessions, have lots of presentations. I don't know. It was interesting to see what other people had done and what they had spent to do it, but.
And what worked? Because some of them were successful.
I'll be quiet.
Couple of them are still in progress. Several of them were successful. So, and they all took a little different look at it.
Yeah.
Couple of them are still in the works.
There's still, there's no, there's no one way to attack this issue. Other thoughts, if you can.
Two were listed as zero cost, right? Any of them is going to involve some time, so there's going to be some cost, right? But some of them. Yeah, but some of them did, I think it was, they did a ser, oh, yeah, here Champagne did a survey, too. So that probably was.
They chose to do that as part of, I think, that tier two conversation? Yeah.
Probably wasn't free, but probably.
That one wasn't.
It wasn't free, but it probably wasn't.
It was not.
The value of the next.
No, it wasn't. It was less than that.
Yeah, okay.
It just felt like they needed to get a, more of a random sample. That's what they, I, that was my understanding.
Or a less random. More complete, more, well.
Yeah.
I think it's a far more random because I think the people that are engaged in our dialogue today are the people that either support or oppose. You know, you don't really get the middle of the pack.
No, you don't. That's, that's always the, the hard part, right? Other thoughts?
I would say I still, I still like some of the things that we talked about related to facilitators, commu, somewhat people from the community who might step up and facilitate this for us for no charge.
It does feel, to me, it feels more organic, which I think is important for our community.
And I think it, it's sincere, too.
So, and we could use the, the, that thought exchange or whatever. I mean, I don't know if that provides a more random sample. I don't know exactly what all that software entails, but you said we already have a subscription to it, right?
Talk about thought exchange, and I know there was one school district that was using it. It's like how they used it.
It's an opt-in, so it's not a, you know, like, it's not a phone call, so it's an online survey. We do have a subscription to that service. We do have the ability to put something together. You can frame up the questions any way you want, you know? And what it does, it's a, it's an algorithm software that will generate themes. Or it's, it'll, it'll, you know, you can guide it and they put together, you know, the process for you, depending on what the questions are. And, but it's an opt-in, so.
So when you say opt-in, so that's only people, like, we, when we send our communications, it's to people with children in the district, people who work for the district, and people who have what, contacts with the district and say.
Sign in. You can sign up.
Chosen, they can sign in. We have a lot of those. People that, friends of the district, right?
They just want to keep the pride to the school. They don't have any kids, but they just want to know what's going on.
And so.
Government bodies, too.
So when you say that you have to opt in, like, but those, that group of people who are on our communications list, like, it would go to all of that.
But then they have to choose to go and complete the survey.
They would.
That's the opt-in. As opposed to.
Like the, the individuals. I'm like, well, do they?
No.
Like, that's kind of.
The difference is people, whoever, they would have to choose to take ten minutes or whatever to complete the survey. They would have to choose, we'd send it to all those people, but they'd have to choose to, to fill it out. Now, if you, it's different than doing a public opinion research. Well, they will take, you know, they will keep calling people until they get
Yeah, like here.
Three hundred people to take the survey. So they'll get your sample.
It's an option, too, actually.
Well, it is, but they will keep working until they hit their number of relevance.
It's still an option. It's still an option.
So we don't know if we would get ten thousand responses or two thousand responses with thought exchange. We don't know. You know, we'll throw it out there to anybody and everybody.
It's a good place to start, you know?
So what would we, what would, how would we use it?
You'd have to have like a call to action. Like, the front page would have to be a really.
Sure.
I don't know. This.
It's all the questions.
The message will explode if you don't.
So I get the message. I'm worried. I don't like things exploding. So I say, okay, I want to go in and do it. What am I going to, what are the questions that I'm going to answer? How do we use?
Do you think our buildings need, you know, it, what it does, it takes keywords and phrases. You can ask the questions. Are, are our buildings in need of renovation, you know? And then you can, you can ask the fiscal questions if you want. You can ask, and you would see through the responses some emerging themes. So, and it, they produce a report and it will show you, here's, you know, what the emerging themes were.
There's a lot.
You don't get the raw data. You don't get the raw data.
Yeah, you, there's a lot you could reuse from this Champagne one, too.
Oh, yeah. Samantha, you've talked to them, I know, more than I have on this. Do you have any other thoughts on it?
Um, yeah, so it's, it's different from like a regular, just like Google. A people, they can write down whatever their thoughts are and then they take, they generalize ideas from those and, you know, categorize everything. So the, the questions themselves, it's like, it would be three questions maybe. And they're very, they're very general, open-ended questions. They're not specific at all. And then people will go through and like rate, you can rate their, your thoughts on certain questions. It gives you instructions on how to do that and then write like specific comments. So.
I actually like the transparency, transparency phase with our community. If you had very specific questions. The open-ended questions is just going to lead a conversation here and now we're trying to interpret some of the thought.
That's what thought exchange is.
If we were at the beginning of the process, that seems, where we are in the process, that just.
It may not be the right tool.
Right. That's what I'm wondering.
Or if you have a failed referendum and you're coming back.
Right.
Like town park and they're like, okay, guys, what do you want to do? Right?
Right.
But it's just an option.
It, it just dawned on, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If I look on here what Unicom are, the question, I mean, we, we have the questions, I mean.
They have them preset and then you just give it the blessing or not. I mean, they do a lot of this, just so you know. A lot.
So it, it just dawned on me that at our last meeting when we had a lengthy conversation, um, that I think Angela and Sandra may not have heard that conversation.
Were you talking about it?
Well, I'm sorry.
Just kidding.
Well, um, one of the things, I don't know. I'll share it. One of the, I, I had an idea that when we did the strategic plan, the last time, we had a very large cross-section of the community. People could volunteer, we targeted, um, you know, government officials, similar people that were in that Champagne poll. And my thought was, there have been, in Barrington, actually, we've had success. And on the North Shore, they've had success using more of a caucus sort of concept. Where we could invite, you know, have this big group of people come together, have them review what we've seen. Have them, um, challenge administrators, ask questions, give them information and have them eat, they could do, we could have, charge them to do one of two things. They could, we could tell them, we will cede our decision-making to them. What they come up with, we'll take it. Or we could ask them to make two recommendations to us. And we would give them, and as the Champagne one did, they had guiding principles. And so they had some parameters. We could control that process a little bit with some parameters, but yet allow the community, because it would be all community members, to help us shape a referendum question. So we had a lot of discussion about that the last time. And, you know, who would facilitate that? And we came up with some ideas of people who might, community members, who might be good at facilitating, who would help do that. I'm trying to keep it short. I'm trying to think if I missed anything.
You did a good job.
And there seemed to be some interest in that. But then we asked Brian, well, help educate us on what some others have done and, you know.
That was our last meeting.
And then we had a, we, we had, kind of had a little bit of a timeline of what, if we were to have some community engagement, what that might look like. Sorry.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna channel Joe's comment from our last conversation, right? Where I, I think part of his argument, part of his concern, right, is he doesn't want the perspective and the knowledge, right, of us collectively as a board, not to be part of that process, right? Not part of that decision-making. So I guess a big part of what we have to decide, I think, with this community engagement piece is, what is it we really want them to do? Right? So for instance, look, the next task that we have is to try to take the framework that we had presented to the community, and we got a bunch of community feedback from that, right? So the next task is either to say, do we want more feedback like that? Do we want to take that feedback and do we want to create a different set of options? Right? Now, that, that different, you know, the, taking the feedback, that, that could be us doing that, right? Or that could be another community group. Right? So a lot of what we have to decide is, what do we want to do and what do we want a community group to do? Right? I mean, you know, you, you could, as a board, you know, we could try to take that feedback and recast the structure into a, a different structure, right? And maybe just one or two options or, you know, pick some levels. And then engage a community group to say, are either of these, or any of these, you know, which of these three options would you, would you suggest we put on the ballot? Right? So I'm trying to figure out, is the goal of the community engagement piece to kind of process the next iteration with the community feedback? Right? Or is it, or do we want to do that and then engage the community to help decide on the referendum question? What do you guys think?
Personally, I would like to, I mean, I think we have things to clean up before we can get them, give them anything, if, if we were to use a community group. But I would be comfortable putting some parameters together and asking for, I mean, what we're asking them for, whether they're formulating the question or we're coming up with, we asked for a couple of options to be determined. But I would actually be comfortable giving, giving them some freedom to process what we have had, what, what has come to us. In terms of community feedback.
If you give them that task, the group's going to, the group needs to be smaller in size.
Yeah, then you just kind of get like the same, then I feel like we're not getting the, it, it goes back to the same, the people who are engaged, or the people who are all for it, or the people who are against it.
Well, so I guess I would, I, I would hope that we could populate that room with people who may not have already been engaged. You know, ask someone from every village board to be on that, you know? I don't know. I mean, I was thinking that we could get a good cross-section of the community. I think it's incumbent on us to make sure that there are cross-sections in there.
So what size are you thinking?
Well, I mean, I was thinking 300 people. I mean, I'm looking back to the, um, the strategic plan.
And Brian, you just said, not a lot of people. You said small group of people.
Well, I think if you give, if you give people the task to try to synthesize stuff, then I, I, you can't use 300 people to synthesize data into something. That's too big a group, I think. So, you know, I mean, I would probably encourage us to think about, maybe that's something we can do with the staff, the board and the staff. I think we can take that feedback and recast it and figure out what we like and then present more discreet options to a group for them to consider. But if we want the group to take different feedback and synthesize it a little bit, one, I think the group is going to have to be smaller. Right? And, and, and two, I think, I, 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 I'm trying to listen to Joe, right? And his concerns. We as, as a board have to, I think, be willing to accept whatever they come up with. Right? Whereas if we do it with the administration, we know that we're bracketing and putting parameters around it based on the feedback and our knowledge of the district. And then you're asking people more to choose or tweak around the edges. You know what I'm saying? I think these are, these are kind of key structural questions that we have to wrestle with.
I, I agree with what you're saying about, I mean, we just can't take the pile of stuff I have on my desk and hand it over. We, we need to do some work before we were, we would give it to a group. I guess I'm not opposed to a smaller group. My reason for wanting a larger group was because I think when all is said and done, having a larger group of people who have a greater understanding and who've taken the time to come out, whether they oppose or not, they're more educated. And we would also then be able to, to say, just like we've said with the strategic plan, we had, pick a number, a, a large number of people, help us do this. And we didn't do this in a silo.
Right.
And I think that, you know, we, I hear the word transparent all the time in our conversations. I think that is transparent.
I agree.
And if we pick, if we do all the work ourselves, then we are not as transparent as we could be.
How many responses did we get in aggregate from the three meetings, from individuals? Pondered?
There's the people attended?
Yes. That actually gave us their opinion.
That's a good question. Remember?
So hun, so, so I guess my concern is now we're taking 150 people's opinion and redrafting and calibrating something that we think is important to the community. And I don't think 150 people is representative of the community.
The only thing was is the message was consistent.
Yeah, right.
All of them.
Right. I, I didn't, yeah.
So more consistent with.
But the people that attended those were whom? People that have primarily a vested interest in the physical structures of the building.
That's a valuable perspective.
I agree, but I, I don't, I, I think if we're going to have success, we need to have kind of a more granular response from the community before we propose a question. I don't think we have enough information to do that.
So how would you get that information?
I don't know. That's why I asked Dr. Harris to, you know, look into other options. I think we've tried the community outreach and we just haven't had a great deal of success.
So are you thinking that we would try to create a survey of some kind that would duplicate the content of the community meetings? And try to publish it to a, a larger cross-section of the community? I'm just trying to figure out how to do that.
I, I don't.
Yet, that, that would be great, but in reality, like, we do surveys in my office all the time. Our CEO has to beg people to do that.
I understand.
The issue with the survey is that.
I got like five surveys.
They're not educated. I'm, I'm going to go back to Penny's comments, because I think it's important to get that education in the survey.
Right.
I don't feel does the education. And like, I'm looking at this, the tier two team, if I got it right, for the, that they did, they held like a dozen meetings. They had like a dozen meetings. Over a pretty short period of time, but.
Well, and let me be clear, the reason I referenced the tier two thing was, it was a structure.
Right.
I mean, it was a, if you called tier one the core committee and then tier two was a broader base of community members, that was sort of my.
Right, no, I understand. I'm just saying, having, having a series of 12 meetings over a short period of time is much different than sending out a survey to the same number of people. If we, if we are able to, um.
Well, I think the concept of the survey would be a much bigger number of people.
I think it's not one or the other. And I, I think the, some of the value and the information you brought us, Dr. Harris here, is to see what other, what professionals who do this, you know, how they approach it, what are the options? I think we need that kind of expertise to make decisions instead of trying to figure it out, you know? Necessarily it's one or the other. It doesn't seem like it is. And we have data on what's worked to, to what degree and what their approach was, so. Maybe we should look more closely at that a little bit and decide if we want to do it, you know, how we want to do it.
Was there one that you liked over the others?
No. I, I gotta tell you, I mentioned the idea of getting some consulting advice months and months ago to a board member and it didn't move forward. And so it's nothing I had researched, it just seemed like a good idea based on how we were doing and what we were kind of grappling with. So seeing the, the more concrete, um, examples of, of what that looks like to me was, wow, this is, this is valuable information. We, maybe we can get some value out of this. So I think it's a board conversation, you know? I don't know what, what would work in our community and I don't even know what success looks like yet, to be honest. We're talking about how we're going to fund a master facilities plan that's still being formulated. So I'm not sure what, what that success looks like. But I think, you know, we need to, we need to figure it out.
What I'm hearing is that everybody wants us to do this first, this first, the tier one, if you will, um, before we, before we take the next step.
Oh, no. I mean, I, I, I don't know if Gavin would agree with that. Not sure Mike would.
I mean, I know that sometimes referendums pass and sometimes they fail. And so sometimes you have to do more than one. Uh, and that, you know, these things could take time. So, you know, maybe there's a strategy that we could come up with to meet the needs of, you know, long-term needs of the district here, regardless of what, you know, variables and obstacles we're going to run into. I think that's what I'd like to feel like we're working on. I think we are working on that.
Any other thoughts?
We'll just say, so. After have aggregated data for that survey, I feel as if the, um, you know, it didn't, it was easy to take an opinion on the results of the survey depending on how it was presented and form an opinion. And so I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about a survey. I'm not opposed to a survey, but I would have to be convinced that the data we would receive from the survey would, um, would really not be biased in any way.
But, but, I mean, maybe it will be biased, but the. People are going to vote on this, right? I mean, like, this doesn't come back to us for a decision. So don't you want to know what people think? I mean.
That would be the ultimate survey.
I do, but to Gavin's point, if only middle school parents, you didn't make this point, but, I mean, he's, you've, you've expressed a concern about having a real cross-section of the community be involved in anything that we have, that we do to help us form our decision. If, I'm just picking this, you know, if only middle school parents weigh in, or if only people from South Barrington weigh in on our, on the survey, then it's, then to me, that's biased then.
But an election's biased. I mean, maybe it rains on only, you know, people that live next to.
You just can't, you just can't, like.
So.
Well, but I think the educate, that's where, that's where I believe the education piece is important. Because the more people that we educate, the more people we get involved in understanding, the better.
See, part of, I have to tell you, part of the frustration that I think some of us have on the survey stuff is, we had this conversation, we wanted people to be educated and stuff. So we actually put a bunch of documentation. And like, it was like, there were thousands, yeah, thousands of surveys were filled out, but yeah, like 11 people read the stuff we wanted them to read. So.
The questions, as a
Right, but.
Member of the community, I, and I, I have to be honest, the questions were very confusing. Now, I, I think the questions as it relates to this are a little bit more black and white with a little less gray.
Help me with that, because I'm struggling.
Yeah.
I, I, I didn't understand the questions, what you were even asking.
But how can we ask black and white questions? This is what, look, there's two, there's like two buckets of things that we could use a survey for, I think, right? One is to try to sort through priorities, right? And, um, if we go into any survey, and I think we have to, you have to go into any survey and say, whatever the survey says, we gotta do it. Right? So, if we're willing as a board to cede the whole priority conversation, right, to a survey, right, then I think we can do a survey, right? But I'm still not sure I know how to ask questions in a survey that, that dictate those priorities, right, in a way that's meaningful. But I'm open to thinking about it, right? And then the second thing that you would try to ask, right, is to try to get some sense of either value or the dollar of a referendum, right? And we know we can't ask that question directly, it's gotta be indirect, right? So, you know, I, I, I got a kick, right, I mean, we got, I won't say their name, right, but we have one school district, right, that's talking about surveying their community, you know, about a referendum, right? And I've received like three emails from our lawyer, right, you know, saying, if you do this, be very careful of your questions. Right? So, I don't know how to create those questions, right? I mean, I, from what I've seen, what other people have done is, you know, high priority, medium priority, low priority, right? At the end of the day, does that, is that a black and white question? Right, you know what I'm saying? I don't know how to create a black and white survey.
So, you can't, you can't put dollars in this?
You can't say, it's against, you can't say, would you support a referendum for these purposes for 150 million dollars?
You can't do that.
No.
Can you say, would you support building a new stadium for 150 million dollars?
You bring dollars.
So, you cannot, so there's no way to put dollars in it?
You can state like different, like, look at what Harper did last spring, right?
You can do a range.
You can, you can say, you, you can do, you can do ranges, you can say, you can say, is this a high priority, you know, if, for, for this kind of thing and this kind of range, is this a high priority, medium priority, low priority? You can do those kinds of things.
Strongly favor, favor.
You can tie a.
But this is, this is not just a survey though, right? This is not.
I know they do it, it's against the law.
What's against the law?
This isn't us doing it though, this is, well, I guess it is, this is, this is what.
Yeah, you're hiring somebody to do it.
You're hiring somebody to do it.
That's what Unicom does, but remember, Unicom in our, in our district, right, was always hired by community groups, not by the school district. Right, we, we as a school district can't spend funds gauging interest in or asking questions. Remember, let's go, we can go back, we can dig up that Milichap letter that he sent us, right? You gotta be really kind of soft and funky, you can't ask direct questions. So, if we, so I'm just trying to figure out how we structure the survey to give us the feedback we want without generating negative reaction when we do something different than what the survey says, because they interpreted it differently.
Could you, could you send a survey that said, would you support a measure that would increase funds, funding for the school, but keep your taxes the same? Would you support a measure that would, you know, like, you know what I'm saying, like that? Or is that not big enough?
I, you know, it's an interesting, 'cause I think it's the, the specific dollar value which you're referencing there. But I mean, those are questions we, we should probably get Milichap on the phone, right, and figure out.
And those are the, those are the kinds of questions though too, that I think, I know nobody liked the idea, but you could put, you could put on a, on a ballot, right, an informational question like that.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you, you could do advisory.
Advisory questions like that.
Right, but again, you gotta figure out how you're gonna, how you're gonna structure that, right? Because, because, I mean, like, in, in, in our case.
Why wouldn't we do that?
Why wouldn't we do what?
What is the reason that we wouldn't put that on the next ballot?
Put what? Because I'm not trying to be a smartass, I'm trying to be specific.
No, I know you're not. Would you support a measure that would raise funds for District 220 and would not increase your taxes? I mean, is that, is that?
So, 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 we talked about this at a previous board meeting, maybe you weren't here, but, but I mean, we could, right? But, but then the problem is, and I don't know, we'd have to get a consensus here that that's what we would wanna do, because if the answer comes back and says yes, right, then, then you gotta do it, you should do it, right? You don't wanna go more than that.
But you don't wanna go more than that, right? That's, that's the problem, so.
So, let's say, so let's say you did an advisory question that said, you know, hey, here's 150, it doesn't cost you anything. Here's 175, it's gonna cost you 50 bucks a year, right? Let's say you did both of those questions, I think you can put up to three questions.
How many questions would be the limit, right?
You can put up to three.
Three.
Right, so, um, so let's say you did that, right? Well, I, look, I guarantee you, and we already know this from the data that we've had, albeit somewhat limited, and Lance points out it was very consistent. Whatever the numbers are, right, there's gonna be more people at 150 than there is at 175. There's gonna be more people at 100 than there is at 150, right? That's just the nature of that.
And the other thing.
Right, so if I ask three questions in increasing order like that, you're gonna get the biggest yes at the lowest value, which I think we already know, we don't need an advisory, you know, question to tell us that. But if you do that, you're gonna, you're gonna have to then go for that biggest one.
I think the other thing, the other thing I would contribute is.
The biggest, yeah.
You know, when we had, when we had the. When we had the. When we had the.
The other end of the value proposition, what do you get for that money? It's not enough to ask just a tax only question, you have to put the components in.
I know.
But I, I feel like if our, if our goal is to educate and our goal is to engage.
Yep.
Then by giving a preview of that that could elicit interest in an open forum like an election, isn't necessarily a bad thing. I mean, now, I, to me, advisory doesn't mean binding, it just means.
Needs advisory. Now, how people interpret that.
It, so you feel like it, it can still create some ill will, or?
People will take it literally.
People, they won't feel like they have the information to make, to make the decision. It could be completely different, potentially a completely different demographic in November than you will in the spring election.
What we, what we had talked about is if we're committed to a community engagement process in the fall, putting, if we, and we would have to do it in August, right? If we put a advisory question on the ballot, that kind of preempts your community engagement, right? You're not gonna do any community engagement, right, while you've got the advisory question going on, because you're gonna live by whatever the advisory question. So, the community engagement piece becomes secondary, and why would you even do it? Because your community engagement is the advisory question.
During the community meetings, the other thing that I think we learned and was reflected in the feedback is that people might be, people were very curious about what was included in the dollar amount. And so, if we just put, would you support X, this dollar amount, without the other knowledge?
But then you supplement that with the, the community engagement, the, the, the survey, the whatever we're gonna do. Like, I guess I don't, I, I don't know.
I don't think it's mutually exclusive.
I don't know what the answer, the right mix of it is, but there's multiple options.
Has anybody done what?
An advisory question?
An advisory question? There have been.
School districts, I'm not aware of, but I know Forest Preserves have, I know, I've seen other governmental bodies do that. Not, I'm not aware of school districts, but I've seen other groups do it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not aware of it, but that doesn't mean it hasn't happened, right?
Counties, Forest Preserves do some of that.
You know, I think, I've seen schools use it from a facilities perspective on whether they should close a school or not. I think I've seen one or two like that.
Whether you should what?
Whether they should close a school.
Oh. Americans who might be, I mean, there's work behind communicating that is on the ballot and what it, what it's all about. You'd have to communicate that in order to have people be as informed as possible. But if you haven't, if you're only looking for advice on what the dollar amount should be, you don't know what it's going to be paying for yet. And if we go through all the work of figuring out what it's gonna pay for, then we should just put it on the ballot, period. Just throwing that out there.
Take a chance.
Well, I mean.
They say yes or no?
Because, but that's kind of what you're doing anyway.
Well, but, but in reality, during the election period, there's people that are still gonna be uneducated about the question we're asking, right? And they're all gonna sit there and vote, and they're just gonna say yes or no, you know what I mean?
Yeah, the majority of people, look, if, if, if everyone knows, no, very few, majority of people won't be really knowledgeable, but hopefully they know that the question's gonna be on the ballot when they go to vote, because they've heard enough about it. And they, and typically people will ask friends, right, that are more knowledgeable about schools, you know, what do you think of this? How should I vote? But you're right, we're not gonna have.
No matter what we do, I don't think the level of education is gonna be more needed.
We're not gonna be able to educate everybody to a certain level.
But that doesn't mean we don't try. I guess that's where, I mean, I think it's so important to try. That's our, that's our role.
I would just say that in the experience we've had in District 220 referendum, you know, there's been a public, or a, a, a community group that has been formed, there's been canvassing, there've been phone calls, there have been quite extensive amount of community work that has gone into helping to communicate referendum, explain referendum, persuade, you know, from the community perspective. That would be what would be lacking perhaps in an advisory question.
You both what do, what's the two you'd like to do?
This is, in this case, it's a question and, and it's not, you can't say community.
Look, you'd have to have some community members championing it, and then, I don't know how, it would be interesting to see if anyone would come forward to just. There would be nothing to explain, other than would you support this amount of money?
Whatever we've done in the past, you talked about past referendum, that's worked. Doing those things, I mean.
But that's beyond where we're at right now, though. Once we've come up with what the ballot question is, then the community group starts working.
Well, okay, but we've been talking about community engagement and educating the community prior to that, to that.
I think in my mind, part of this is helping us develop the question that we would approve to go on the ballot.
Community engagement.
And I, since, since we've had somewhat limited, the 150 or so people who've weighed into this point.
It's an, I don't think, to my view, community engagement's ongoing, you know, so we can build on what we've done, or try to improve and do more. That's all we can keep doing.
It's just how, that's what we're trying to figure out.
Okay, I, I wanna try to wrap up this conversation, 'cause we're not, it's not gonna make a decision, so I won't talk about it more, but any other thoughts people have before we move on?
I guess what, my only question is, when do we need to make a decision? What direction we wanna go to stick to that timeframe that was laid out?
You know, I, I, I think, you know, the, the timeframe that laid out, yeah, this, we, we'll talk about it again at July 30th, right? And then, we had said that in August, we would approve the long-term facility plan, and then we would try. This conversation, I think, between the next two times we talk about it, the 30th and the 14th, we're, we're trying to get to an end. Now, my suggestion would be that, because we'll have all seven of us on the 30th, right? Based on the conversations and the materials we have right now, would it be fair to ask each one of you just to sit down and just, you know, kind of write down, this is what I'd like to do?
For the facilities plan?
For the community engagement piece, leading to a referendum question. Right, and then.
Hold on, so, back that up for one sec, you want us to, how we would approach the community? And write that down?
How you get from, let, let's assume we have a, we have the master facility plan, right? It's gonna be approved in essentially the form that we've already seen, right, with whatever tweaks we, we do to it. Right, assume you've got that, right? So, the question is, how do you go the next step, which is for us as a board to engage the community in a meaningful way that leads to a referendum question that we would approve in December to be voted on in April? Right, you've heard, but we got committees, caucus, big groups, little groups.
Survey.
Surveys, right? So, I, what I, what I'd ask is, on the 30th, let's all come with what our thoughts are. Almost decided to ask tonight, but I think that's probably not fair, right, so.
Or have you later too?
But, yeah, right, right. So, I, but, but I want everybody, that, that should help just kind of crystallize our thoughts going into the 30th, right? And then we'll just have a discussion slash debate, and hopefully try to get pretty close. And if we don't decide anything on the 30th, then, you know, we got the 14th as a fallback.
Should that be an open session discussion?
Yeah, yeah, it is an open session.
But no one will be there?
Well, oh, yeah, sometimes people do show up.
They wanna see the new building.
So, it'll be noticed on the meeting, right, the morning is closed session for board retreat. Then we go to open session, we'll talk about priorities, which I'm guessing this will be a big priority, and then we'll have a conversation.
Remember, we've done that before.
I thought it was all gonna be closed as a retreat.
No, 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 we start and close, but then we're also doing, because setting the board priorities and everything, that's all open session stuff. It's only just kind of the internal evaluating portion that's closed.
Good to know. I'll bring my homework assignment.
Bring your homework assignment. And let's, and let's figure this out. Well, I mean, sit down with your favorite beverage, whether it's coffee, wine, beer, scotch, whatever it is.
Not at the retreat, though.
Not at the retreat, in the comfort of your own home.
During one more time.
Why, can you some tea?
Give me some tea, tea's good. Okay, does that make sense? Can we leave that here? We'll leave it here? You're looking at me now.
I'm good, I'm good.
What do you like to go till 10:00?
I'm down to 7% battery again. Can you believe this?
Good, 'cause we're done, Brian.
I know. What, what is wrong with my laptop? It's only on school board nights, it just happens, by the way.
We started at 5:30.
Yeah. Okay. Annie, you wanna, do we wanna look at our August 14th agenda? Uh, what do we got? Look at Mike, here we go.
The budget, ten day budget.
Yeah, that's gonna be big.
Blue print.
Everybody who can make it to that August first, um, finance meeting, you know, with comments on the budget, that would be helpful.
What time is it?
Anything else you guys wanna add to the 14th?
The one thing I did wanna.
I mean, obviously, yeah, we got the enrollment up.
You know, I've been talking, well, with the high school staff about, and I didn't know if the board wanted to have just written information or have a discussion on the use of student IDs, you know, of, I remember we had that, you know, Steve and I were talking about that just recently, over the last couple of weeks.
that just recently, over the last couple of weeks, and, you know.
You want to put that on?
As a discussion item.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, just, he collected some additional information, and if you want to add that, that would be great, I just think.
And I would encourage, I think, right, as board members, right, this is kind of a key part of our connecting to the community, right? And this is an interesting issue, because I think a lot of people like it, and there, there may be some people, I'm not sure, that may not like it.
Yeah.
Right, so I would encourage board members, as you're, as you're out and about with time in town and you meet people and you talk to friends, ask them how they feel about this.
Is that a board decision though?
Um, well, it is.
I'd like board guidance.
Yeah, I think, I think because it's, it's a community, it's, it's an impact on the community, potentially. Some people don't like it.
Safety, security.
Just like awareness, at, at the minimum, I, there's no formal requirement of it, but certainly want board guidance, because it's community value.
Yeah, it is.
So, you know, we, we certainly want, Steve and I have talked about that, and we want to make sure that, you know, we head in the right direction and, you know, with the intent of focus on safety and security, right? And, but don't want to, you know, go beyond where the board's comfortable with topics like that.
So what do you want us to?
We'll bring, Steve's in the process of putting together some additional information, just information, he's collected at the end of the school year, and, and then we'll just have a discussion around it. I'll get the information to you in advance.
We should ask our neighbors, our friends.
See if anybody's got any issues with.
If students should.
Security, where are these?
Yeah, if, if.
At the high school?
If students should be required to wear their ID around a lanyard.
At that.
Like staff does.
Just at that.
Is it, would it be possible, at first I was just going to ask for a memo, but I think it might actually, there might actually be some value to having a little presentation regarding the timeline on the GPS that Gavin mentioned, you know, on the buses.
Just an update, then?
Well, I mean, are they going to be operational the first day of school?
That was the plan.
That, that's what we were told, and I think I heard something different today. Well, I believe they are.
GPS, I mean, there's a couple of pieces that are going on with that. Happy to get more information.
Yeah, let me.
Get it to Dr. Harris to get out to all of you.
I could even do as part of my superintense report.
The GPS piece shouldn't be on the list.
Could do as part of my superintense report.
It would just, it's something that I know I had a lot of conversations with people in the community about, and it would just be good, I would find it helpful to know kind of what the status is and how people are being communicated with, so they can learn how to use it, things like that.
Why don't I put together just a, you know, informational update, but then I'll make it part of my superintense report and we can have, is that okay?
Yeah, I think it would be good for people to be able to listen to you talk about it.
So I always do back-to-school type of conversation, that would fit perfect.
In a perfect way, so you can start over there.
I agree with that.
You got it. I'm not aware of anything different unless you were, Dave. John hadn't shared that with me, but I. Some technical things?
Well, yes, and I had a conversation with, with June, you know, a little bit about when some pieces of the parent stuff were get flipped on, and so if you heard me, try to soften that a little bit, that, that was why, and I think some of it was trying to do.
Let's just, we'll, we'll put together a timeline.
Give us a whole update on that.
I'll do that.
Okay.
That'd be fine. And then I'll make it part of my superintense report.
Thank you.
What else on the 14th? Okay, any future agenda items? We got enough on our plate? Okay, is there a motion to approve the confidentiality of closed session minutes?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's our motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned. Go enjoy summer. See you in a couple of.